I'm Kelsey Smith, my address is 704 South Sheridan Apartment H. I graduated recently from Truman State University, summa cum laude. Upon graduation, I received the esteemed President's Dedication Recognition of Leadership Award. I was recently hired by Apple, a Fortune 500 company. I'm also heterosexual. And yet here in Kirksville, Missouri, my boss of my part-time job could fire me just because she thinks that I might be gay. Now, I could do nothing about that. She can walk up to me and say to my face, "You might be a lesbian." And you know what? I'm not okay with that. And there's nothing, nothing that I could do. I would simply have to accept it and move on. Now, not only is this harmful for the residents of Kirksville, it's also harmful for our businesses. We need the best workers that we can find, and we greatly diminish that pool of qualified candidates if they're eliminated simply because of something that has no bearing over their ability to perform their job. I thank each and every one of the council members who have supported this very important ordinance so far. I understand that it's very difficult to stand up for things that are right, but may not be right in the eyes of people around you. I've lived through it for the past couple of years, living at Truman State University, where there's a diverse student population and a lot of different opinions. And I recognize that it is quite difficult to live through different situations in which you might not agree with a person next to you. I also understand that it's very difficult to rise above that and to keep your opinion strong. So I thank each and every one of the council members who decided that now is the right time to expand equality to our city. Your fellow community members have noticed. They came here to tell you that we are so thankful that you recognize that now is the time for equality in our city. And that now is the time that we need to stand up and say, "This is right for our city," both morally, ethically, and business sense. We know that businesses across the country are slowly changing and accepting the different sexual orientations and gender identities of the different citizens of our United States of America. Thank you very much.
I'm Ben Darling, and my address is 906 East Washington Street, Kirksville, Missouri. I was born here, and I am currently a junior at Culver Stockton College. Now, I mean, I'm a heterosexual, and I mean, I've never had this problem, but here's what I see from both sides. Everybody's just bashing their heads on each other, and I mean, and I'm not just saying for Kirksville, but in my opinion, the whole nation in general. And my opinion, what needs to happen is that there's this really nice coexistence between everybody, from religion, to race, to gender, to sexual orientation. And I believe that if we were to make this step here, that it would be a very good thing. The First Amendment of our Constitution, freedom of expression, I believe that includes sexual orientation as well. And I'm glad that we have open-minded individuals here today who may agree with me on this as well. And also, I'm sorry, I forget where I'm going with this. But needless to say, if we could all strive to just live together, I mean, I'm not saying agree, I mean, well, yeah. I'm not saying agree with whatever everybody's opinions are, but maybe respect and tolerance, and that coexistence will happen naturally. That's what this country needs to strive for if we are to go back to our prime, as we were on Independence Day.
My name is Dave Mandell, I live at 1701 South Lewis Street. The impact of things like employment discrimination doesn't just stop at the workplace. It doesn't just stop at finances, it impacts people emotionally. And because it impacts people emotionally, it also impacts them physically. They literally have, their brain is basically at a point, starts working against them. And when you are fired from your job, when you are told, "We will not employ you because you are gay, because you are bisexual, because you are transgender," the mental shock of something like that can kill a person. It can cause someone to take their own life. And in my opinion, if even one person were to be saved by this change in our law, then we have an ethical duty to pass it.
Is whether or not any ordinance that you're going to pass is enforceable. And how is it enforceable? Because if it's not enforceable, then you are going to enter into trouble later on, and I've seen this in other places. The other thing is the wording of it. If the wording is not absolutely clear, then it can be enforced arbitrarily. And if it is enforced arbitrarily, it depends on the perception of the people making those decisions and not necessarily on the rule of law. So what I am asking the city council here to do as an outsider is to take a very good look at the legislation you have and decide whether or not it is enforceable. And whether or not the writing of it will allow arbitrary interpretation. Because if arbitrary interpretation enters into the mix, then anybody can make the law say anything that it wants. And I say that from experience, having lived all over the, all over the world. Am I pro-gay, against gays? You know, that is not the issue. You know, I am pro-people. And I think that you need to take a look and say, "Okay, if we're providing this for the sexual orientation of certain people, are we also going to provide the same privilege to people of certain religious orientations?" And that becomes a major issue, much bigger than the one you're about ready to decide. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brandon Eichner. I currently reside at 702 East Normal Street, here in Kirksville. I wanted to give a bit of personal information just about myself and how I came to be in Kirksville. I came here for college, but I have, I since graduated, and I've been here, and I'll probably be here for another year. I've worked at the public library for two and a half years, and in that time, I've gotten to know a lot of Kirksvillians. I really like this city. And when I, when I started working here, it became readily apparent that some of the townspeople were, excuse me, nerves, were a bit less than friendly with respect to people who are LGBT. But I was fortunate enough to be employed where my supervisor and all of my coworkers were supportive. I just started a job today, a new job at another company, where I am not so sure that they have the same attitude. When you've been out of the closet for three or four years, possibly five maybe, and you work at a new place and you meet new people, it can be a very jarring experience. And the experience that I had today was interesting because I heard three different slurs against people who are like me, LGBT. And I also essentially had to put myself back in the closet. The experience of going out of the closet and then coming back in is a lot more difficult than coming out for the first time. I am in support of this bill because it would make me feel safer about, excuse me, it would make me feel safer about coming out at work, it would make me feel safer about being able to express myself. Half the day I was listening to middle-aged men talk about women and their escapades. And it's, it's entirely different for them because they can express themselves without being worried about people beating them up or calling them fruits. For us, it's not the same. I think that this ordinance will give me a better sense of protection, and not only for me, but for the transgender people that it covers, the other LGBT people that it covers, and for people that come after me. And they all need a voice for, they need somebody to talk for them, even though they might not be here today. So, thank you.
My name is Rebecca McClanahan. I live at 2807 Breeze Wood Drive, here in Kirksville. I, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, members of the city staff and observers here this evening, I speak in support of this ordinance. It's not about Democrat or Republican, black, white, straight, gay, transgendered. It's about us, it's about all of us, and it's the kind of community that we want to be. And this is an opportunity for Kirksville to lead in the state of Missouri. And I encourage the council members to step forward and lead on this issue. Representative Nate Walker is in the outer area, and I just spoke with him right before I came into the room. And we were sharing a little bit about how this is not a partisan issue. And Representative Walker has signed on to the Non-Discrimination Act in the Missouri Legislature, and I applaud him for doing that. And I think that helps us understand this evening that it's not an issue that is one side or the other. It is about all of us, and I would encourage you to do the right thing and to support this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
My name is Aaron Rogerson, and I reside at 603 West Shepherd in Kirksville, Missouri. I stand here today because of great concern that I have for the city of Kirksville. Benjamin Franklin once said, "That I have lived, sir, a long time, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see this truth, that God governs in the affairs of men. And if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, it is probable that an empire can rise without his aid." The subject matter at hand does not go without the notice of the Almighty God. I'll quit reading here just to say this, there's a lot of opinions tonight, and I could care less for the opinions of man. I only care for the opinion of one, and his name is God. As a means to establish a foundation, let us consider what God says about himself and man. First, God is not a respecter of persons, and neither should he be because he has created all men and women. Next, we know that God loves all men and women. In fact, he loved us so much that he gave his own begotten son for them, each and every one of us, on the cross. But Romans 5 reveals a very interesting truth to us, and that it says that we are the enemies of God, and that Christ died for his enemies. Therefore, we know that God does not like us based on our sin and our sinful actions, thus he calls us his enemies. Christ died that man might repent or turn from these actions and walk in righteousness, and that righteousness is found in the Word of God. As a follower of Christ, I am instructed to love all men, my neighbor, my enemies, does not matter. That means that I am to demonstrate the love of Christ to them. Don't miss this point. I can be kind and demonstrate the love of Christ to someone, and yet stand against that person and what they stand for, as Christ stands against them as his enemies, and yet demonstrates his love to them by dying on the cross for them. Now only do I know this, God, and what he stands for. I live in a country that affirms this God. The opening lines of the Declaration of Independence read, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Our founders spoke of God and called him our Creator, giving to each of us certain rights. Our founders were right that God is our Creator, and in the Holy Rite, when he put a family together, he made a man and a woman, and it was no other combination, otherwise mankind would have ceased to exist. God seeing and knowing the sinfulness of man, later made laws against behavior that was a perversion of his creative design. God judged Sodom and Gomorrah for their sin of homosexuality. In Leviticus 18:20 in the Word of God, the Bible says, "Thou shall not lie with mankind as with womankind; it is an abomination." God's opinion is given in the New Testament on the subject of homosexuality. In 1 Timothy 1:9, the Bible says, "Knowing this, that the law is not made for righteous man, but for the lawless, for the disobedient, for the ungodly, and for sinners, for unholy and profane, for murderers of fathers, and murderers of mothers, for mens' slayers, for horror-mongers, and then it says, for them that defile themselves with mankind." He also says something similar in 1 Corinthians 6:9 and 10. Counsel, God's mind has not changed on this matter. He created and made no one to be homosexual. Be reminded that God has judged cities in the past for their protection of such wicked behavior. God does not love the homo, God does not love the sin of homosexuality, and there is no doubt. But if they do turn, God wants them to turn from their sin, and if they do not, he will judge them. God will judge this town, and be reminded that too much is given, much is required, and you are the leaders. And God will, once again, judge leaders in leadership for the condolence of such sin. I realize that this ordinance speaks to much more than just, it's pretty broad, but I realize, and it's evident by the room tonight and those things that are said, that the thing that's fueling it is the sexual identity issue. Also like to say, that I further say that our town needs no nine-member council to sit over and visit the abuses of perceived abuses that have taken place. The rule of law is that there has been a violation of the city law, and people should call the police and not go to some snitched nine-member council that they believe or think they have been mistreated. Go to the police, that's the rule of law. I would also like to say that the ordinance calls for its good citizens to be two-faced. Within the ordinance, there's something that disallows or gives exemption to religious organizations. Religious organization is protected because it believes the Bible. But we don't want our parishioners to believe what they hear at church enough that they are free to make their decisions to live in line with their conscience.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Shane, the Reverend Jeanette Shane. I live at 412 East Harrison, and I am the vicar of Trinity Episcopal Church. I stand in favor of this ordinance. I rise not because I think that you haven't heard everything that you need to hear. I heard something that I think you need to hear that differs from what you just heard. I believe that, I believe that God looks down on this town and thinks, "This town is doing really good things." And we want God to be looking at us, saying, "We're doing really good things." When we talk about the judgment that God will have, I believe that God will judge this town appropriately and happily if this ordinance passes. With regards to Sodom and Gomorrah, it's clear to me that God didn't judge those people because they were homosexual. God judged them because they were inhospitable to people who needed hospitality. I'm here to say that Christians in this, in this town and across this nation support this ordinance. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm here to talk to you about the fact that I came from a smaller town than this. And in my small town, people didn't talk about people being gay. They didn't talk about people being bisexual or transgendered. They didn't talk about that at all because it was such a taboo. And I believe that today, if this ordinance is passed, it will lessen some of that taboo. We have to remember that there are also young people here who are heavily influenced by the words that we say, by the words that we tell them, "Gay is not okay," or that you can be fired for being gay. And when we say that, we lower their self-worth. And I think by today, if you pass this ordinance, we can move into an era where it's not seen as such a demonic thing, to be different. A second point I would like to make, while I do not demean any of the religious experience of anybody in this room, I would like to state that there are people other than Christian in this city. There are Muslims, there are atheists, there are Buddhists, there are many different types of people here. And by pandering to one specific subset of religion, and by saying that we are a Christian city, that we are a Christian nation, we completely forget that those people exist. And while I am not demeaning it, I would simply like to state that the separation of church and state is one of the most important things that we have as the United States of America. And today, by passing this ordinance, you could show that's something that we can uphold, that we can show, "Look, we are a state. We are not a church, and we cannot look to the single ideals of one faith when we represent everybody around us." Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Honorable Councilman, my name is Jeremy Pingle, I live at 11 Kelwood Drive here in Kirksville. I agree that no one, regardless of sexual choices, should be denied a place to live and some way to make money. I think that these are basic human rights and as such, need to be protected by the law. That being said, however, no one worries about who you're sleeping with now, so why should we make those prefaces known publicly? Do people even want to have privacy, their privacy invaded to the point that when applying for loans or renting apartments or getting a job, they're asked these types of questions? On another note, the assumption that we may lose business if we do not pass this ordinance is hypothetical at best, and has been a non-issue up to this point. Let's say you vote to enact this ordinance. Hypothetically speaking, what type of sexually oriented Pandora's Box could this open? If we are doing something for the sake of the hypothetical, will we then make sure to cover all the hypothetical bases? How far will we have to legislate to make sure that every special interest group is covered? To vote in favor of this measure is not in the interest of Kirksville, and as a lifelong resident, I would ask that you vote no. Thank you for your time.
I just came, I'm straight. I just came here today to support my friends and neighbors and community on this project that you're, this endeavor that you're going to vote on. And I'd like to see you support those people that have a hard time. You know, as women, we had a struggle too, to get into different phases of our careers and be recognized. And I recognize the struggles that they must have, and let's be realistic about it. Thank you.
I'm John Rao, I live at 1606 East Deer Street, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you on this issue. My wife Martha and I have lived in this town for 40 years, we have been happily married for 54 years. I'm pleased to say that one of my, our son and one of my grandchildren is here in the audience this evening. I'm a Christian, I have been a Christian all my life. One of the bright parts of my life has been the years that I was here when my wife Martha was on the city council. She would talk to me about what was going on at city council meetings, not a lot, but basically what she would tell me would be, "We're trying to be a progressive city." And I can assure you that if you pass this ordinance, we are trying to be a progressive city. And I urge you each one to vote yes for this ordinance. Thank you.
My name's Seth Amory, I promise to make this brief. I know you guys are tired of this. I live at 202 East Jefferson Apartment 4. I live at 202 East Jefferson Apartment 4. I just want to remind you that this bill is not only about sexuality, it is also about gender identity. I understand that a lot of people, no matter what I say, will always see me as female. And I understand that there's not a lot I can do about that. But I am male, and I will live my entire life as male. And if my boss saw me shopping in the men's department at Walmart, she could fire me because she didn't approve of it. I work at Sheridan Valley, I work with people with disabilities, I love my job, and I always want to give back to the community. I would never do anything to harm anyone. And I ask that you remember people like me who are just normal when voting today.
My name is Larry Tagg from Route 1, Goran, Missouri. I came over to support my pastor, Brother Aaron Rogerson. I listen to a lot of Christian radio, and I, the lady that was here, that was the preacherette, I, I don't agree with her as far as Sodom and Gomorrah and lots of other places in the Bible, that it was destroyed because of that. God is a forgiving God, don't get me wrong, I've been a sinner all my life, very much so. And, but I just noticed that when I go give blood, they ask me about my sexual orientation when they give, ask about giving blood. I mean, it's very important to them. And I just know that there's, when I listen to Christian radio, some of these, some people, no matter who they are, die of AIDS. And, you know, I've always been worried about, I've always been worried about dying of cancer. But there is, I mean, there's serious risk at, 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 at some of these lifestyles, it's a serious business. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am Alicia Ekman. I live on 712 East Pierce Street in Kirksville, Missouri. I am Christian, I am gay. But neither of these things matter because what we are talking about tonight is not what makes people feel gross inside, what people detest, what people have a bad opinion about. Tonight, we are talking about the law, and the law states that everybody has equal protection under the law. That means that if somebody is going to go to work and they're going to be discriminated against, if, no matter what they are, gay, straight, but wears tennis shoes in the morning, no matter what they are, they should be equally protected under the law, regardless of religious beliefs, regardless of moral beliefs. This is the constitution that us Americans have a duty to uphold, and we need to remember this. Thank you very much.
My name is Sherri Palmer, I live at 23213 Rainbow Basin Trail. And the reason why I came up is that I'm speaking as a mother and as a resident of Kirksville. I've lived here 21 years this month, and I've raised two children here. They both graduated from Truman. One has a job here, the other's in graduate school, and I hope that he will come back and live in Kirksville and work in Kirksville. But I can't let him do that in all good consciousness unless I know that both of my children will be equally protected from discrimination in this town. And until that happens, I wouldn't feel comfortable having both of my children working here. And I love both of my kids equally, and I'd like you to protect them from discrimination equally. And I also want to point out that there's some mistakes been said about like AIDS. AIDS isn't a gay, I think we got over AIDS being a gay disease back in the 80s. And actually, the rate of, the rate of HIV is higher amongst straight people than gay people. So the gentleman will have to really watch out for being around straight people if you want to avoid AIDS.
My name is Trey Alamein. I live at 1516 Blueberry Way. And I printed off your, the code this afternoon and just read through it. And there were just a couple of things that concerned me, actually several things, but I'll just, some of the language in it, it talks about the people on the commission will be able to provide assistance for the purpose of aggressively obtaining a resolution of issues. Talks about eliminating the alleged discriminatory practice by conference and conciliation. At two or three places, it talks about eliminating. And again, when you're talking about a commission having the authority to recommend people be prosecuted, to me, that's not just, "Let's all get along." And I was pretty concerned about that. And as I read about the public accommodations part of it, I mean, it sounds good to say everybody should be able to use the water fountain and that kind of thing. But when it comes to issues of things like gender identity, we need to realize that there are municipalities and school districts across the nation who are currently being sued and having to pay lots of legal fees for things like, there's a headline, "Koi Mathis Transgender Colorado First Grader Wins Lawsuit Can Use Girls Restroom." This is a person that was born male, six-year-old first grader, that took a school district to court based upon a law that was put on the books about anti-discrimination. There's another case from a year ago about an Arkansas student who is male, winning the right to use the female restroom. Things like that concern me because I think if you pass a code like this, you're putting a bullseye on our city for lawsuits. And I don't think that's going to be good for the city in the long run. So, thank you.
My name's Patty Ficus, and I live at 2510 Oak Lane here in Kirksville, Missouri. And I'd like to thank the council for letting me speak, and I just wanted to touch on two different things. One, our federal government and our state government do have non-discrimination laws in place already, which do not include sexual orientation. So I do feel like we will be putting, and now, I don't believe in discrimination, I've been in human resources for a lot of years, over 25 years. And the thing that- And the thing that most human resources people want to do is hire the best qualified person with the experience that it takes and the qualifications that it takes. Employers in town are not asking whether people are married, whether they have children, whether they go to church. Those questions are not being asked already. Our employers are already trying to live under the law of the land, which is non-discrimination against people in protected classes. And sexual orientation is not at this time included in a protected class in the state of Missouri or in the federal government. So the city is going to be putting themselves out there for, I think the gentleman before us was saying, for additional lawsuits, and those are going to cost the city money, they're going to cost our employers money. And so I just would like to encourage you to really take that under consideration. We, as a city, do not have a lot of money right now. Our budget's tight, and so we are going, you will see additional lawsuits, which you're gonna have to pay for somewhere. And those are our tax dollars that are gonna be paying for those lawsuits. So, and I know that our council really does want to make sure that the things that happen in this city are prudent and are for the best of the city as far as what we can afford to really enforce. So I just would, I encourage you to vote no against this ordinance. And I thank you very much for the time that you've given me to speak.
Well, first, thank you. My name's Erin Mallon. I currently live in Columbia, Missouri. I just moved out of 416 South Marion Street Apartment 2. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for the courage you have shown in bringing this issue before your council today. As the original drafter of the ordinance, I would really like to address some of the things that have been thrown out about the particular language used. There have been a lot of really, really bad factual inaccuracies. The first, most recent, the idea that people would be suing the city of Kirksville over this, that simply is not the case, and your city attorney can certainly explain why that wouldn't be the case. But no provision in the ordinance would be leading to that. There have been a lot of concerns over where we would go from here, what would happen next. A lot of slippery slope arguments tend to be made. There is no evidence in any of the other cities that have passed this ordinance that any of those things will happen. It takes a lot of courage to pass this, to be the first city in northern Missouri to pass it. You are not the first city in the state of Missouri. Numerous cities in and around St. Louis, Kansas City, Columbia, already have this in place. It includes sexual orientation, it includes gender identity, there have been zero restroom debacles, and there is no reason to expect Kirksville to face any of the problems, any problems that none of these other cities, either around Missouri or around the country, have faced. Kirkwood and Columbia are where I drew the ordinances to draft this one. This is kind of a combination of those two. And Kirkwood has had their ordinance in place for several years, and they have had zero lawsuits. And Columbia has had theirs in place for about twenty years, and they've had two. This is not a massive drain on your resources. But it does take courage to be the first in northern Missouri. It doesn't take courage to attack a transgender six-year-old, but it takes a lot of courage to pass this. And I'm really, really, really proud of the individuals who have brought this before you today. Look around the room. This is democracy in action. Raise your hand if you're here in support of this, because not everybody's gonna get to speak tonight. But show these people who's here. This is Kirksville. This is supported by the majority. And even if you think that being LGBT is an abomination, most people still support the idea that you shouldn't be fired for it. This is a really, really important ordinance for this city, but I really want to thank everybody here who has made this happen. Thank you so much, and I am looking forward to passage. Today is a really good day for Kirksville, a day that you should all be very proud of. Thank you very much.
Which is why, if you go into the federal level and you look at HUD, for instance, because housing is an issue on this, employment's another one, EEOC. Both of those websites tell you that, you know what, they do not list sexual orientation as a part of their non-discrimination policy. And the reason they don't is because the federal government has not determined that this group has some special status and that their civil rights have been violated. Matter of fact, on the EEO side, it simply says that, it says that the commission, let me put it this way, that the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission says they enforce the federal employment discrimination laws. So they are empowered to do that, and yet they don't take the side of this group. So you're siding against them, basically. In our state, it's the same situation. We have a Human Rights Amendment in this state. And they chose not to add this group to their non-discrimination clause also, because they don't believe there's any civil rights being violated here. None at the state level, none at the federal level, and I tell you, it would have to be solved at the federal level. Since this hasn't been solved at the federal level, it's like any other special interest group that can't get it solved there, then they're trying to make it happen in other situations, even in this place and even in our city as such. So, number one, it's not a civil rights issue. Two, that's proven by the fact the federal government has chosen not to side on this situation. Number three, the state has chosen not to side on this situation. Number four, is that, you know what, if we're not careful how we do it, there could be civil rights violations with people on this before it's over with. Because it's gonna be difficult. You're trying to fix a problem that doesn't really exist in this town. And people may, you know what? Yeah, I know, you may laugh, but it's like, you know what, I've been in the City Council for three years and nobody brought this issue up. Nobody told me that there are housing issues, or there are employment. No, it never came to our attention as such. And you know what, and I'm not saying there couldn't be some people that have this situation, understand that. Do you understand it wouldn't just be this group, however? I mean, I know some black people that have had some problems in this town. And their rights are also guaranteed in terms of the Bill of Rights. So it's like, you're trying to fix a problem that in general, you know what, hasn't come up before. We have gay businessmen. We have gay people in terms of city councils. We have gay people who own a variety of situations, that have been on lots of boards, that own houses, that rent, that do all the things we're talking about today. And in general, you know, I haven't heard them saying that they couldn't get along in this community. I'm sure someone will represent it here today. Request promotes favoritism and reverse discrimination. I have just two more things to say. And the reason is, okay, if I'm an employer, and John comes to me, and Sam comes to me, and they fill out their applications, I look at them both, they're both qualified for the job. And I say, you know what, either one of these guys could do the job, they look good to me, and I flip a coin and say, A, it's one guy, B, it's the other guy, I flip it, it's A, and I picked A. Okay, and B comes to me afterwards and says, you know what, I think you discriminated against me because I'm gay. Well, you know what, we don't ask those questions for employment or for housing or whatever else. You're opening something here that I don't think you're gonna want to live with when it's all said and done. Nobody's asking those questions when you apply for a job. Nobody. Nobody's asking that question. And so here it is, all of a sudden, "A person should be hired based on the factors relevant to job performance." What does this have to do with job performance? I don't see it has anything to do with job performance. I don't think it's anybody's business how people live like this or otherwise. And the last point I have, is if this special interest group can buy their way and force their way into this situation, can I tell you, there's a lot of other special interest groups. They brought up the hypothetical that, hey, if somebody could put a sign out here for a business and say, you know what, no gays allowed. Well, they could put a sign up that says, "No atheists allowed either." Or "No global warning people." Or "No people against ethical treatment of animals." We could have signs against all those. But it's just special interests. And my point on this issue is that, so maybe we should put them all, maybe we should list all these people in the non-discrimination clause. Because in the end, everybody's special, isn't that right? And if everybody's special, then nobody's special, and that's what the Constitution says. The Constitution says we're all created equal. So if we start putting certain groups in here, then we're saying, actually, some people are not created equal. With that, I close. You know what, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate that you would vote against this.
My name's Matthew McCollough. I live out in Mc County, Adair County, out on Route A. I come, I'm actually just about as hot as it comes listening to some of this. Who here is an American, by the way? The Civil Rights Movement in 1964 gives us the right to suit. The city is not liable for most, ninety percent of the lawsuits that are out here. What does it take to actually sue a city? It takes you gentlemen to actually put a fork out in front of us to stumble on purposefully. That's the kind of lawsuit that it takes for a city to be sued. But sixty-four, nineteen sixty-four, but right here in Missouri, we're still in the Dark Ages. Right here. I've got a lovely wife, a nice pink shirt that she says I look good in. And I can't wait to hear what your guys' vote is on this. I'm hoping you guys will support this. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrew Chauncey, and I'm with promo. And sorry, my voice is a little harsh, but I come from St. Louis in Pride Fest. And I'm not gonna say anything, I just wanted to mention a couple of things from what the former speaker had said that were wrong. There are a lot of movements that are happening in the federal government for our rights and protections. HUD did pass protections in 2011 for discrimination in housing, for sexual orientation and gender identity. That was a crystallized law, so housing, that any HUD program funding that goes through this city, if it's HUD-related, will be protected. Also, the EEOC crystallized a law that said gender identity was...
I'm also your elected third district state representative. It's been mentioned by former Representative Rebecca McClanahan that I supported the House version of this in the General Assembly. I was a co-sponsor. I'm here to tell you, you've got a big decision to make tonight. I'm not gonna tell you to vote yes or no, you have to make that decision yourself, you're in the arena. But I'm here to tell you, that discrimination of any sort cannot be tolerated. This is a country that was founded upon individual rights and rights for everyone. We didn't quite get it all right because we still had slavery, and we still had some other things. But we're working that way to make sure that nobody is discriminated against. So I urge you all to use your great conscience to make the right decision tonight. I'm a Christian, I go to church every Sunday, I read the Bible. I don't think this is a religious issue, I think this is an issue that we need to make sure that each and every one of us are treated fairly and have the same rights and equality for all. So that's my position, and I urge you all to do the right thing tonight. Thank you very much.
My name's Tim Mills. I live at 1409 Pond. And, you know, I've been part of Kirksville, Missouri since 1971. I've raised a family here, I've got four kids, I even got grandson. And just upfront, I would plead that you would see what this is and actually vote no for this petition. And, you know, I could go through a lot of different things, I could quote scripture, I could do this, I could talk about what everyone else talked about here. But I also know that, you know, I took pride in this town, I've lived in this town, I've raised my family in this town. I take pride in the state of Missouri, which even from the US Constitution on how they feel about marriage, about how they feel about the sanctity of marriage between man and wife. And, you know, I have nothing against people's sexual orientation. I work at Truman State University, have for fifteen years. I've had employees that were from every nation you can think of, I've had them from every color you can think of, I've had them from every religion you can think of, every sexual orientation you can think of. I've had them all, they've all been treated equally. I've never asked one time about their sexual orientation, or even after it has been disclosed what their sexual orientation is. I've never heard anyone in the state, or in the city, all the years that I've lived here, worked in the businesses, worked around people, ever once had said that they had been mistreated because of their sexual orientation. The only time people have been mistreated is because of their attitude, how they presented themselves in the business and in the workplace, and their lack of performance. And, you know, I take pride in this place, and I would hope that you would see this what it is. It's a hidden agenda to actually overturn the full stance in our Constitution to change our marriage law in this state. And I would hope that that would not happen. Thank you.
All against nay. Motion is defeated.
I'd like to say something. I, you know, I met, I lived back here a year and a half ago from Seattle, just a week or so before I left there. I met a lady that was deeply stricken with guilt and grief. Not only had her son just died, but he had taken his own life. I don't know if any of you folks read the news recently that two gay men were literally, literally clobbered to death in Russia for their being gay. It is actually against the law in Russia to even say the word gay at all in public. I was raised in a very, very right-wing religious church here in town. I'm actually a native of here. And, you know, it's really sad that Christians in general, at least on the right wing, they tend to categorize a person's sins, and it seems that they kind of place their sin of homosexuality, you know, just near the high. And that is just so sad. So, you know, hopefully this will come around again. I had anticipated this to become part of our ordinances. But so I admire each of you that came here tonight to stand up for what you believe in. Thank you.
About discrimination, I kind of bought into it. Because my perception of discrimination, as I was raised, was you're not able to ride the bus because of your color. You're not able to sit at a table because we don't want you in here, you're not dressed properly. To me, those were things that were discriminating. But I'll tell you, I've been saved the last ten years, that God got a hold of me. And what I, I always believed in God, but I didn't know God. I had never gone to God or the Son Jesus, who gave their life.
If you would have known him, you would have voted differently.
He gave his life. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying, marriage is between a man and a woman. The issue is that this carries on beyond just... This carries, this, you know what, I've got a lot of gay friends, a lot of lesbian friends. And I don't discriminate against them, I don't talk them down, because that's not me to judge that. That's God's judgment, not mine. I love them just like I love my straight friends. We socialize together, we picnic together, we have good conversation together. They don't throw their issue and their lifestyle on me, and I don't throw my lifestyle on them. But as a Christian, just read your Bible. That's all I ask you to do, read your Bible from the Old Testament to the New Testament.
I'm gonna quote you from last week's Kirksville Daily Express. Taylor wrote the article, he can verify it. "I think it's wrong to say you can't come sit and sit down in my restaurant because you're gay. You can't ride the bus because you're black. You can't have alcohol because you're Indian," said Councilmember Bob Russell. These are things that we've developed as human beings on this earth. We've made it that, we've made this what it is today, we need to correct this thing. That's my thing here, and I'll stand by it.
That's right, and I did tell him...
And that is shameful!
No, I did tell him to quote that, but here's the thing. This goes beyond what I was talking about.
How so?
This goes against all religious belief of God's holding to the promise.
Maybe your religious... This is not about religion.
Then I have to be judged on that.
You will be.
Oh, will you?
Okay. Moving along, motion is second to approve and enter a settlement agreement with KJ Services Inc., resolving disputes...